I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mrs. Huskins.
Here.
Mr. Tannenshire. Mrs. Conkle.
Here.
Mrs. Rivera.
Here.
Dr. Wargley.
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? Not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Huskins, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the agenda presented. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed. I will need an approval for an effective session.
I need the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of individuals whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputations and those individuals have requested a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers that the board hold a closed session as provided in section twenty-one point five one I of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of individuals whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputations and those individuals have requested a closed session. Roll call, please, Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Huskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle. Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wargley.
Yes. Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to acquire the finest academic and extra regular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to adjust the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. All that we ask is you come up to the podium, state the capacity that you are with the district. You will get three minutes and then say what you want to say. Since it's not a non-agenda item, we will not respond to it, but we are listening to what you have to say. We would just ask if you're mentioning any type of names, especially with regard to people in the district. We ask that you keep it confidential. Is there anybody here who would like to say anything? Please come up and state your name and...
Hi, I'm Ryan Weber, and this is my wife, Megan. We currently have Olivia Weber as one of our daughters. She is a sophomore at PV High School. And Avery is a seventh grader at the junior high. We're not going to take a lot of your time. We just wanted to kind of... Hopefully you guys got our email that I sent to you all on Saturday. I'm not going to rehash that. It was just for you to kind of read what we were asking you for. Recently, I've been a head high school basketball coach for eighteen years, which is longer than Olivia's been alive. But it was time for me to step aside and do something different and spend more time watching my daughters play, and they love playing volleyball and basketball here at Pleasant Valley High School. That retirement lasted about three weeks, and I was contacted by Bettendorf High School to gauge my interest in being the head girls' basketball coach at Bettendorf. I met with them, was offered the position, accepted the position, and so here we sit just asking for the reasons be that we identified in a letter just kind of talked about, discussed, as well as the major sticking point is, obviously, I stated Olivia plays volleyball and basketball with the ninety-day sit rule. You know, this is one of those things where the stars kind of aligned, and my job took me somewhere where I could possibly coach my own kids, which is something I've never done or never thought I was going to do as I spent my whole career coaching high school boys in Illinois. So that's all we wanted to do is we've been made aware that there were some changes to the legislation in June or July of two thousand and twenty-one. We feel that we meet some of the criteria for the ninety-day sit rule to be waived. There are things that we are asking for. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. If there's any need to discuss anything further with either myself or Megan, feel free to reach out to us. All right? Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else? Now we will go to board members. Smolkin.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Rivera.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Conkle.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Huskins.
Thanks.
Mr. Ayers.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Finnsmann.
I have nothing.
Nothing for you, Ms. Taman?
Mrs. Kenyon has nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Zimmer.
Why do?
Okay.
This past weekend, I would like to recognize the Iowa High School Music Association Solo and Ensemble Festival and Pleasant Valley Vocalists were awarded fifty-two Division One Superior ratings, forty-one Division Two Excellent, and nine Division Three Good ratings. We recognize individuals who are best of center or achieve some special designation in vocal music. Tommy Glennon was best of center in vocals, vocal solo. Leah Mendelin, vocal solo, and she had a perfect score. A treble ensemble of Shavani Iyer, Leah Mendelin, Elizabeth Hernandez, Reena Sattler, Cecilia Vondresek, Alyssa Gauss, Grace Haven, Lexie Pezler, and Ava Berman were also best of center. And then there was a special recognition for perfect scores Caleb Sweeney in vocal solo, Elizabeth Hernandez, and Cecilia Vondresek in vocal duet. Base quartet of Connor Shute, Seth Benyon, Tony Shamrell, and Bryce Viney. And then a mixed quintet of Leah Mendelin, Ava Berman, Caleb Sweeney, Tommy Glennon, and Bryce Viney. In instrumental music, band students performed. They set a new PV record with sixty-nine Division One Superior rating, twenty-two Excellent Division Two ratings, and six Division Three ratings. And then orchestra, congratulations to all the students who received six Division One Superior and one Division Two Excellent. Fantastic Saturday.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Zimmer? Okay. Ms. Taman.
I do have a couple of things. First of all, there's an updated personnel agenda. Lots of updates since Friday afternoon. And second, I want to tell you about Spartan Spotlighters. That's a new theater group we have in Pleasant Valley, and this weekend, Friday and Saturday, is their first performance. It's going to be really something we've never seen before. They're doing a... And every exceptional actor has a peer mentor. So the exceptional actors in the spotlight, the peer mentor is kind of the wingman, helping with lines and whatever. And sometimes the songs are a bit of a duet instead of solo. I got my ticket this afternoon, and a lot of tickets are sold. So if it's something you'd be interested in, go to the Spartan Drama page and go to Show Ticks for You. As a board member, you don't have to pay. Any other one out there, anybody with a Century Club pass does not have to pay. It's going to be the first of its kind on the Spartan stage, and Christina's already told me it will only already come for next year. So if you have time Friday night or Saturday night, I know you'll love it.
I'm happy you wish. I was going to mention that, so I'm happy you did not. And supposedly, they did the first run-through. No, they did the first run-through yesterday, and I heard that it went really well.
Is Rishi involved?
Yes, he is. Yes. So I am looking forward to it. I will be going there on Friday night. Can't wait to see it. Mr. Struce.
Yeah, just one thing real quick. I just want to say, as many of you know, today was our Pleasant Valley Education Golf outing. It was a great day. It was not raining for us. It was warmer than last year, so we're very happy for that. But I just want to say through the generosity of everyone, we hope to raise close to forty thousand dollars in as far as senior scholarships completely. And the reason why I say completely is because, remember, Arconic is our sponsor, and they pay for our green fees. I want to thank the city and Palmer Hills for closing down the golf course basically for us so we can have one hundred and forty-four golfers. It was a great day. I just want to say thank you to our one hundred and forty-four golfers who were out there. Also, our food service, Cory Gamble, our Director of Food Service, puts together a great meal for all the golfers, and her team comes out to serve everybody, which is great. Debbie for taking many, many questions throughout the last few weeks to get this thing rolling. And then also Heather Hagman and her team for putting together. Heather basically organizes the entire thing, so it was a great event, very, very smooth event today. I'm just so proud of our community and how they come out and fill this up every single year. Just a great opportunity. And even though the weather's not great, they still donate their money for our seniors. So again, just a great community event. So proud of everybody and looking forward to next year already. So if you want to let us know if you're going on golf, just let us know, and we'll make it happen. Thanks to everybody.
Thanks for that update and for that collection of funds. That's great for our seniors. Mr. Hyde, now you just got here. Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, then we'll go on to the rest of the meeting. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Huskins, second by Ms. Conkle that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Nutrition fund.
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman that the discussion fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Huskins that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. High school activity fund.
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Conkle that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Pepper Fund.
I move the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Rivera that the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Internal Service Fund.
I move that Internal Service Fund warrants sixty-four ninety-eight to sixty-five zero-one be issued in the total amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and three cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Huskins that the Internal Service Fund warrants sixty-four ninety-eight to sixty-five zero-one be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Trust Fund.
I move the trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-two cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Rivera that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay, moving on to whole business. The twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four adoption of budget and taxes. Mr. Finnsmann, is this something that we've already discussed?
Yeah.
Optimizing it?
Yeah, tonight is the final step along the way on adopting our certified budget for the upcoming two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. You have in your board packet the normal documentation that we provide each year when we certify the budget. I'm just going to quickly go through some of the highlights of that document. If you go look at the second page in, you know, the page right behind the cover page, the main thing to point out on that page is the very last line on that page, the proposed property tax rate per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. As we've discussed at several board meetings over the past month or two, it represents no increase or no decrease in the district's property tax levy rate for next year. It would still be thirteen dollars and forty-six cents rounded to the nearest, to the nearest penny. So thirteen dollars and forty-six cents again for next year for the levy rate. I guess the only other line I would point out on this page is line thirty-six, total expenditures. And this represents total expenditures for all of our various funds in the district. The general fund, management fund, Pepper, capital projects, nutrition fund, all of the funds combined in the district, in the district, our budgeted expenditures for next year are nearing a hundred million dollars at ninety-five million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. So that's representative of continuing to grow in the district. As we haven't that close to a hundred million in expenditures, so... And of course, our revenue is growing also because of our increase in number of students. The third page in the packet is just the same information as in the, on the second page. The only difference is the second page is what got published in the newspaper. The third page is just a duplication of that information. The fourth page in breaks down all of our revenue and expenditures in the district by each individual fund. So if you want to see the breakdown by all of the various funds in the district, that is on the fourth page in the packet. The fifth page in the packet is a summary of our long-term debt in the district. So it shows the balance that we still owe on our voted Pepper loan and the balance that we still owe on our three borrowings that we did against sales tax. All that information is on the fifth page in the packet. The sixth page in the packet breaks down, just gives a more detailed breakdown of our property tax levy dollars in the district and how much we're levying for the, all of the various components of the property tax levy rate. So Pepper, Management Fund, and then within the General Fund, the breakdown between cash reserve levy, instructional support levy, and those types of things. If you have any questions as I'm going through, don't be afraid to stop me and ask a question. And then the next page again breaks down also, page seven also breaks down the property tax levy rate amongst the various components of it. Plus, it shows the amount of state foundation aid that we're bringing into the district for next year from, through the state foundation formula. Once you get to the tenth page in, well, actually, then from the ninth page on, it's mainly just historical information on various items related to the certified budget. Again, the normal pages that we put in the board packet related to the breakdown of flow chart of our combined district cost in the general fund in the district, the history of the utility replacement excise tax. And then starting with page eleven, twelve, eleven and twelve are a breakdown of, or a historical breakdown of our cash reserve levy in the district. Page thirteen in the packet is kind of interesting. It's a ten-year history of what our property tax levy rate and what our taxable valuations have done over the past ten years in the district. Page fourteen and fifteen again is more information on what we've levied in the cash reserve levy in the district. And then, of course, the final page in the packet is the long motion that would need to be made tonight to officially approve the certified budget, which the due date for this, I believe, is April thirtieth. So we still have a week or so, but since this was the last board meeting in April, tonight was when we needed to have the board approve this so we can take it down to Scott County building and officially get it certified here in a little less than a week. I'd take any questions, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? We talked about this at a couple of board meetings, so if there are any questions, then I will take the long motion.
We do have to have a public...
Actually, yeah, let me just open up for a public hearing.
We do have to have a public hearing. Yeah.
So since there's no other questions, I'm opening up for a public hearing. Does anybody have any questions regarding the issue on the option of the budget and tax levy rate? Seeing none, public hearing is over, and now I will take a motion.
At this... Oh, go ahead. Okay, I'll do it. At this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Pleasant Valley Community School District held as provided by law and finding that the notice of time and place of hearing has, according to law and as directed by the board, been published on the eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-three in the Quad City Times and that the affidavit of publication therefore, thereof was on file. And after hearing, is it any resident or taxpayer presenting objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget, I move the board adopt the attached budget summary together with the property tax levies totaling thirteen point four six zero four four per one thousand of taxable valuation for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Huskins. Second by Ms. Conkle. At this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Pleasant Valley Community School District held as provided by law and finding that the notice of the time and place of hearing has, according to law, and as directed by the board, been published on the eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-three in the Quad City Times and that the affidavit of publication thereof was on file. And after hearing any resident or taxpayer presenting objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget, I move the board adopt the attached budget summary together with the property tax levies totaling thirteen dollars point four six zero four four cents per one thousand dollars of taxable valuation for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four year. Roll call, please, Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Huskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle. Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Dr. Wargley.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our second order of board of whole business is the second reading of the board policy series four oh nine point one, four oh nine point two, and four oh nine point three. Again, this is about regarding the retirement. Mr. Struce.
With this being a second reading again tonight, let's go through and answer any questions you may have. But a quick summary, remember, if you start the classified personnel, one, four oh nine point three, it was just a lot of cleaning up of the current language that we have in place, which then when you shift to four oh nine point one, the staff personnel, and the four oh nine point two, which was for administrators, you can see the two areas where with the change in our early retirement program, where we are grandfathering in the number of sick days that they must have in their sick leave bank in order to receive the one hundred percent of their early retirement. With this being a new policy, we are putting the grandfathering clause in so that in five years from now, the expectation is that they would meet the one hundred percent. Actually, four years from now, they would have the, a number of days in their contract aligned with what's in their sick bank in order to receive that one hundred percent of early retirement. So any questions you have, please feel free to ask. Otherwise, it's the same policy, no other changes that we saw last board meeting.
Are there any questions regarding the, this new board policy? If not, then I will take a motion on this as well.
I move the board approve revisions to board policies four oh nine point one, four oh nine point two, and four oh nine point three as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman that the board approve revisions to board policies four oh nine point one, four oh nine point two, and four oh nine point three as presented. Roll call, please, Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Huskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera. Yes.
Dr. Wargley.
Yes. Moving on to new business, now we have the Iowa Department of Public Health, Prime for Life, four twenty, Prevention of the, Mr. Struce, and Mr. Jones.
So I'll go ahead and, as you know, Mr. Jones from high school, associate principal. He is here today to talk with us, another proactive step that we are trying to do in making kids realize how vaping and things of that nature have a negative impact or even drugs have a negative impact on them. And if they are caught doing it, a new program that Jason has been working very closely with to help educate our students and parents on the negative impact and what this can actually do to help them hopefully long-term. So with that, I'll turn over to Jason for his good work on this program.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. So I'm here to discuss the agreement that we have with the Robert Young Center. I'll give you some brief information about it, and then you can ask any questions. I'll start with just saying our overall goal in addressing any substance use behaviors that students at Pleasant Valley have is really a multifaceted one and very comprehensive one, which includes education, cessation, and collaboration with families and law enforcement. So we are piloting this year two prevention programs. The first one is on vaping, and that's called My Life, My Quit. It's a cessation program that's sponsored by the Iowa Department of Public Health where the students have access to a counselor and either chat with them or have meetings with them once a week. So that's that one. That's been going throughout the year. This second program, the one I'm here to talk about tonight, is called Prime for Life four twenty. That focuses on THC and marijuana use specifically. The reason this came about is that we've had a partnership with the Scott Community Health Department for probably four years now, five years is when I had my first meeting with their tobacco specialists when we saw our issues with vaping. And with that, then I was able to connect with Jason Otten from the Robert Young Center, one of the directors at CADDs, and worked with him over the last two years. And then this is a new grant funded by the Iowa Department of Public Health this summer. Really, when everything kind of got rolling was more towards the middle of the year. So it's been a lot of work with him, and then his partner, Xandrea Rodriguez, is who we're working with specifically as prevention specialists. It is an evidence-based program. It's relatively new, but there is evidence to show that it is working. It's provided by the Prevention Research Institute specifically. The nice thing, because this is a grant funded from the Iowa Department of Public Health, that means there is no cost to our families, no cost to our school district. The program meets once a week for eight sessions total. It's completely voluntary for the students and the families. We get a prevention specialist directly from CADDs who meets with the students during eighth period. So it's the convenience of being at the school during kind of the school day, but not interrupting any of the academic classes that the students are involved with. We're requiring parents and guardians to provide active consent to participate with that. I've worked very closely with our school resource officer, Deputy Fa, and our juvenile court liaison, Kelly Fermoy, on this program. They've been a part of it every step of the way. We have currently four students who would qualify and have parental permission for this program. And so we will see, we anticipate if it goes well, that this be an option maybe once for a semester of next year and then once again, again, semester of next year, since it's a two-month program. I'm going to also take this opportunity because you've recently also helped fund our additional halo detectors in the bathrooms, the additional vape detection, and that has been a huge help. That's led to a safer and healthier environment for our students. We've been able to address or intervene with many more students and their families on catching this early and trying to prevent any more use for those kids. So again, thank you for that. It's made a difference. So at this time, I'll open up to any questions you might have about the program or anything else.
As a part of this program, is there pre and post data that's taken to help us determine it? I guess the state too, to determine that its effectiveness and helping to change that behavior and?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So that's part of the permission that the parents give is that that survey result, those surveys are taken pre and post, and then shared back with the state and then us as well, so we can see what impact that's had.
It's a great idea, especially given the concerns that we've had in our district, I'm sure other districts on those behaviors. It's nice to see that there's something that the state is helping us with to address that in a convenient way where students don't have to make an extra effort necessarily to participate and benefit.
Yeah, I agree with this, thank you.
So this is a grant, right? So obviously with the grant, then they're going to study the information, and then will this ultimately be something you think that potentially could become permit funding? Or what happens when the grant money goes, is done?
Sure, so there's not a lot of information on that. They anticipate at least to be renewed for a few years, given the data, and then figure out what they're going to do with that. So they don't really have a clear timeline for when the funding would run out, but it's going to be an annual renewal basis is what they described it to me.
And how do our people identified, students identified, based on counselors? Or how is a student who may benefit from this service be identified?
So we currently have multiple ways that we've identified students. One, are students who've been involved in something at the school that involved THC use. Others have been parents who are concerned and have reached out to Deputy Fa, a counselor, or myself, and just trying to find out what their options are. We have a student of one of the four that would fit that category. Deputy Fa and I talked also, long-term, if there's any students that might be involved in this outside of the school or the district that other officers might intervene with, they usually contact him. And so that would be also an option for us to reach out to those families and see if they want their student to participate.
Are you guys going to do any type of marketing on this? Or trying to, how are you going to make parents aware of this so that they know that this resource is available in case they do have a concern?
It's a good question. So I anticipate using our Spartan tips. We usually do one every like six weeks on vaping or something related to vaping. And so that would be part of this, that we're doing this program, and so parents are aware of that.
Great, I'm very happy that we're doing something like, because I know, as you know, vaping is increasing throughout the adolescent population. And anyway, we can try and reduce that, it would be great. You know, for a while before vaping came, you know, the smoke numbers were going so far down, we were all so excited in the healthcare field. Now we're seeing them go back up because of vaping. And so it's definitely very frustrating from a healthcare standpoint when you see people starting so young with this type of a habit. Anything we can do to try and stop it, I think is really.
I would agree with that, and there's other things that we're doing as well. And I'll provide more information, specific data related to vape use on school grounds, because I really think there's a lot to celebrate there while it's still an issue for youth. I think our actions as a district and your actions as a board have helped curb some of that and help kids.
Any questions?
They talked about what size group is ideal when they're meeting. Like, do they think, like, if you had twenty kids in there, that's too many? But if you have two, then the kids wouldn't benefit because they'd feel put on the spot, kind of thing?
Yeah, so the sweet spot that we discussed was something around four to probably no more than ten to twelve. Just because of that. And at first, we just didn't know how many, so we were also partnering potentially with other school districts in the area. And it's just kind of worked out that they've been able to come and meet with our kids in person. And so we feel that the in-person piece is the best piece, as opposed to anything virtual.
Other questions for Mr. Jones? Okay, great, well, there's no motion. We look forward to hearing the updates and how it goes.
Yeah, I'll see you this summer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, but there's no required motion on that. Moving on to the next order of new business is Special Education Instructional Service Delivery Plan update. And that is going to be Ms. Kenyon.
Yeah, so in your board packet, I believe all of you should have what's titled the Special Education Instructional Service Delivery Plan with an approval date of July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. So as some of you may remember approving this, although that seems ages ago, the state of Iowa required districts to put together really a response to five questions regarding how special education services are delivered in the district. So you can see the current information is in front of you. But I believe starting last school year, we started to look at question three is about how our caseloads determined and regularly monitored. We started to change how we did that in the district. So really, this is just about updating on page five, that question three. We have moved away, you can see on pages five and six, we use quite a lengthy point system for determining special education teachers' caseloads. And I know that Mike, since I wasn't here when they used that, I would ask maybe Mike and Tony and Brian to share any insight on that process and how complicated it really got. So really, we moved from determining caseloads using a points system. That includes students' weighting level. All students in special education are given a weighting level. And since our average class size is twenty-six students, we're now using that to determine our caseload determinations. And we're still sticking true to like question four, resolving caseload concerns and how we do that. So really, we've just simplified the response to question three, so that's what I wanted to bring here tonight. I think also in the packet, just to let you guys know, at our October seventeenth Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, we discussed this, and you can see a list of the staff and the parents that were present. And we talked about updating this question to reflect what we're currently doing, which would mean we are removing this whole point system for caseload determination. So really, tonight, just coming here to get your approval for updating our sped instructional service delivery plan to actually reflect what we're doing, especially for that question three. I don't know if Brian or Tony or Mike want to add history that I might not have, or?
Sure, I think when you look at the previous caseload, that determination process that we use, I'll just use question four, for example, in the old one. It says, how many teachers do you jointly plan? You know, that would seem like an easy question, but it's a very difficult question to answer, because how long are you planning with them? Are you setting aside to go plan with them? And so there's other questions of that nature. So what we would always find is when you'd sit down in one a month, special education teacher or the principal, trying to determine that caseload, there was a lot of gray, a lot of subjectivity in that process. So we actually had worked with, Nor Scott actually had a model very similar to this, and where it's just taking the weighting that Jill just explained and using the weighting of the child. How many, whatever weight the child is, that's how you determine what their caseload is. And all the questions you see down below there are still questions to help us determine kind of in our own mindset how full a teacher is, but it's not on a point system. So again, we still look at those qualifications, but we don't put a rating to them. So that's really kind of the history, just trying to clean up a way to make it as black and white, but it's never black and white when you're talking about the needs of a child. They're also very different.
You know, in my prior districts, we, I don't want to say struggled with this question, but like Brian said, there's just there's never a perfect way to determine that, because one child doesn't equal like a one point oh on paper or whatever, right? Child, children come with very complex needs. So I think the key is too, is if staff do feel like they're overloaded or past a number, there is a process laid out here in question four about how we work through determining if you are feeling like you have more students than you can handle on your roster. So I feel like from my first year here, it's been pretty successful using the weighted matrix. The biggest thing is just ensuring that we're updating those caseload sheets and the master caseload sheet. I see Andrea smiling at me from the tech department, because that is, that is how we determine if we have room for open enrollment or where we're sitting with numbers and if we need to shift any of the staffing. So just really, we keep reminding all the principals and the special education lead teachers to be communicating to Dawn and myself so we can make sure that master caseload list is kept up to date at all times.
And I would just add to that, as you read that policy, we sit down, or I shouldn't, we, our principals sit down with each special education teacher twice a year to look at their current caseload and see how it changes throughout the year, to students who are moving and our students who might leave. So always trying to stay, as she said, with Dawn, keep it.
Does anyone have any questions about this? Questions? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the District Service Delivery Plan for Special Education Services as presented.
Second. Motion for Ms. Conkall, second one, Ms. Rivera, that the board approve the District Service Delivery Plan for Special Education Services as presented. Will call vote please, Ms. Taman?
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Bachmann.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkall.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Captain Weller.
Yes. Moving on to the next item, which is Pleasant Valley Community School District procedural manual for the special education staff. Again, Ms. Kenyon.
More fun stuff, right? So in two thousand nineteen, the state of Iowa's AEA systems actually put out a six hundred and fourteen page. I could be wrong, it might be six hundred and nineteen pages. Special Education Procedurals Manual, right? So their goal with that huge daddy was to implement consistent processes across the state, which is great. But what we're discovering, and I think even prior to my time, was the need to create in a lot of school districts around the state, and thanks to Mike Zimmer's work, before I joined Pleasant Valley, Mike had collected some examples of different districts. So really, what I've been working on this year is just taking things that are very specific to Pleasant Valley or things that I've seen that staff needs some additional guidance or support on, and putting it into our own little manual. So I believe in your packet, we included just the table of contents for now, but just really wanted to update you on, you know, our intent is not to replace the six hundred and fourteen page document. We follow those procedures, but really, the intent is that this manual would be a working document for our special education staff and administrators in our district for additional guidance that would complement that manual. So really, this, you know, I think to have a procedural manual really work in a district, you have to have that consistent plan to look at updating it at least a couple of times a year. Things change all the time. But really, just trying to hone in on not making this a lot of pages, but just honing in on what our staff needs to know to do their jobs. And what happens a lot of times is situations, like a forty-five day trial out for a student who's been on an IEP that the team has agreed to, maybe the student doesn't need the IEP, so there's terms called the forty-five day trial out. You know, if I'm a teacher or case manager, that might be something I don't do often. So the intent would be that they can look this up right here, and it will help guide them. So just an example of something in here would just be related to IEPs. So IEP agendas, it's best practice that an IEP agenda is used at a meeting. There's no state law that says you have to use a specific one. But we've determined, just in work with some of the deans and principals and different special education leads, that, you know, achieve the new system gives us some examples of things we should have in an IEP agenda, like we should always do introductions, we should always state the purpose of the meeting, right? We should designate a note taker. We should talk about the student's strengths before we start to get into their areas of need. So within this procedural manual, we have a section called IEP agendas. And it will say something like, here's some examples of agendas you can use. So it's still really giving staff that choice, but also setting some clear expectations system-wide that we want you to use an IEP agenda. And this is, these are the items you need to include in that. So just different procedures that review kind of how we do business in Pleasant Valley. And I could see this over time, maybe even evolving from more of a management-type thing to more of a, this is how we progress monitor, or these are the curricular options we use within our programs, things like that, as we continue to develop our continuum of services across the whole district. So I don't know if anyone has questions. I can definitely make what I've worked on so far draft is all over it, because I still need to get the teacher input, but really wanted to make sure you, as a board, knew about it first, but definitely going to take input. I believe Tony, Mike, and Brian have seen it. Our district support administrator for AEA has looked through it and feels good about it. Like I said, shared examples from Davenport. Davenport's is a very, kind of very strict legal one, because the state came in and did theirs for them. Looked at Joaquin's, I was trying to think of what, muscatine, and just kind of tried to add our PV flavor and how we want it to look. And we want it to be useful for our staff. It's not my document, it's everyone's document, but hoping to really clear up some procedures and how we do business in special ed.
So you promise when we review it, it won't be six hundred and nineteen pages?
Right now, it's only like twenty-one. We could try to make it a goal to get like under fifteen.
I'm just under six hundred, so I'm really not that hard.
It's funny, because that six hundred and fourteen page document has become just second nature for me, right? Like, it's funny that I even know that, I'm just sure I'll have that memorized what pages things are on.
Jill's work is leaning more towards the legal side of it, making sure that we have consistency across buildings, across teachers, that kind of stuff. What I'm looking forward to is if somebody comes to you and says, what do you do for dyslexia for a third grader? You can refer to that and go, this is what we do. And, well, how does that, how does that continue on through fourth grade, through eighth grade, through eleventh grade? It'll tell you, this is how we serve that particular service. And just taking one service area at a time. What if it's, you know, comprehension, that student, how do we do that? Just gets consistency all the way through. One thing that I've learned over different districts is that I would just focus on my building, that's it. But then somebody would come up to me, and I go, I don't, I don't know what we do here. And then I'm sitting here thinking, as a building principal, I'm not dropping the ball here. I didn't know you were doing that at that level. That can't happen. We ought to maintain services through the entire experience at Pleasant Valley.
I want to say again, thank you to all of you for adding this position this last year. I mean, it's definitely providing dividends to where we need to be. I look at this list and see all the contents, the work that she has, that Jill has been able to do with the CPI, the crisis prevention intervention training, what that looks like this year, and how responsive they are. Training again tonight, or I think this is a resource, the prior written notices, making sure we're doing that correctly. She is this kind of go-to person for all this to make sure this happens. So again, thank you to the board for supporting this, and it's making a big difference for our kids, which is the most important thing.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the, when you just look at the table of contents, you'd see just how many different aspects go along with the manual for the special education majors, and how accurate and also how detailed it has to be, because you're dealing with this subset of students. And I think that we didn't have anybody in here that, you know, really is amazing, goes to the work of Mr. Zimmer and Dr. Lewis, who was here previously. So I'm just happy that we were able to get you on board so that you can help really give the attention that we need for this group of individuals for our district. So thank you.
That's a good work done before me, but yeah, the more we can systematize stuff to make teachers' life easier, follow the law, that's just good for kids, right? So in this stuff, I never used to love doing this stuff, but my, in my past district, it was sort of the name of the game, because we were so big. So standard operating procedures just sort of became what we did. So it's not hard for me, and I'm open to doing it, although I'd much rather be with the teachers and students instead of creating this. But this will be good, this will be helpful.
Well, thank you so much. All right, so there is no required motion on that either. Now we move to the March monthly financial reports. What do you think, Smith?
All right, in looking at the monthly financials for March, nothing stood out to me as unusual for the month. Everything appears to be tracking where we would expect it to be in all of the various funds through the end of March, with three months left in the fiscal year. So any questions, if anybody has any questions? Just need a motion.
Everybody have any questions regarding the financial reports?
Next month, can you make it more exciting where there's something that stands out for you?
Sometimes boring is good.
No. I do this for a living, so it works. I totally agree.
We want it to be in a positive way, not a negative way, right?
Yes, stand out in a positive way.
All right, then I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for March two thousand twenty-three as presented. I want the board to accept the monthly financial reports for March twenty twenty-three as presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Conkle, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for March twenty twenty-three as presented. Will call please Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes. Okay, now we are at the point where we're going to go to the executive session. So thank you all for coming.
We are back in open session. I will take a motion for the approval of Pleasant Valley High School principal and Cody Forrest Grove shared dean of students. And I actually will do one at a time.
I would like the board to appoint Michael Hawley as Pleasant Valley High School principal starting July 1st, 2020.
Second?
Motion Miss Hoskins, second with Miss Rivera that the board appoint Mr. Michael Hawley as Pleasant Valley High School principal starting July 1st, 2023. Roll call ball please, Miss Damon.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
DeWigley?
Yes. And then I will take the second motion.
I move the board appoint Stephanie Sire as Cody Forrest Grove shared dean of students starting August 1st, 2023.
Second?
Motion Miss Brockman, second with Miss Hoskins that the board appoint Miss Stephanie Sire as Cody Forrest Grove shared dean of students starting August 1st, 2023. Roll call ball please, Miss Damon.
Mrs. Rockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
DeWigley?
Yes.
So on behalf of the students, we want to welcome both of you, Mike, the Pleasant Valley family, Stephanie to a new role.
All right, for future dates, Monday, May 8th, we have a board meeting at 6:00 PM. And then Monday, May 22nd, we have another one at 6:00 PM. And then remember, we do have graduation Memorial Day weekend on Sunday, May 28th. And that's at 3:30 PM at the Vibrant Arena. Is there anything else for the good of the order? No, this meeting is adjourned.
You know that they're... Jesus, I'm Thomas.